Ms. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Pugnay?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here, all present and accounted for. At this time, we will have our flag salute. Let us stand. Car guard, prepare to advance. Car guard, advance.
Well, everyone, please join me in the pledge allegiance. Ready again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Car guard, prepare to post colors. Car guard, salute. Two. Car guard, dismissed. Let's give Boy Scout Troop Number 262 a hearty round of applause. We will now have our invocation by Reverend David Pelletier of the Metropolitan Community Church. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Will you please join me in a time of reflection, meditation, and prayer? Dear God of our various understandings, the One who we call by many names, we thank you for your presence in each of our hearts and in our lives, and we pray that as these proceedings continue that you would guide us, direct us. Help us to remember that unity is not a matter of uniformity. Help us to listen to one another and make decisions that will benefit the common good. Thank you for all your many blessings in our lives and in the life of our community. In your many names, we pray these things. Amen.
Amen. And thank you. I'd like to say a happy Cinco de Mayo to everyone, and at this time, we have several presentations, a presentation of awards, and then sworn in of one of our officers.
Good evening to you. Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here today to recognize individual officers for their outstanding achievements in auto theft recovery. I'd like to express a gratitude of our members, insured, and the general motoring public for your valuable contribution. Your work helps reduce the financial loss incurred by society because of motor vehicle theft crimes. An excellent example of savings your reports can represent to motorists is evident in the 2003 vehicle theft statistics. During that year, in California, 241,086 vehicles were stolen. Ninety percent of those vehicles were recovered. This exemplifies the tremendous service and economic savings you provide to motorists. The 10-851 award was developed to honor officers who make significant contribution to the recovery of stolen vehicles and the arrest of suspects. Those of you receiving the award today have met and in some cases exceeded the basic criteria, which is to make six separate incident rolling stolen suspect driver in custody arrests, or recover a total of 12 stolen vehicles, of which a minimum of three must be rolling stolen's, or develop information that results in the identification of a theft ring, subsequent arrest of two or more suspects, and the recovery of at least 10 vehicles. And now I, I'm Kathy Asher with the local AAA office, on behalf of the Auto Club, would like to present and congratulate the following officers and present their 10-851 awards. And that would be Melissa Damaris and Gustavo Ariza. And Captain, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
Actually, I just wanted to say that this is really Gus's second award, and when you think about auto theft, a lot of us sometimes think of it as a very victimless crime, and it really isn't. And if you've ever been, if you've ever been a victim of having your vehicle stolen, you know how very frustrating it is. And I'd just like to congratulate these officers personally, on behalf of the AAA Auto Club and also the Highway Patrol in terms of their efforts of recovering vehicles. So congratulations. And just real quickly, their recoveries tonight represent about $140,000 in vehicle value. So, good job, you guys. And here's your pen. I'm not sure from your department where you put it on, so congratulations again. Good job.
Good evening, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, I'd like to present to you a brand-new police officer, Officer Ryan Russo. I could have you stand right up there. Turn around, look at the crowd. He's a California boy. He's born right in Merced. He's served eight years in the United States Marine Corps. His last station duty was in the Marine Corps Depot in San Diego, where he served as a drill instructor and a senior drill instructor. I heard him during his police training. He can really scream out there. He was yelling the cadence for him. He began working for us in October of 2003 as a police trainee, and he recently graduated from Riverside County Sheriff's Academy on April 5th. With him tonight is his fiancee, Molly. Molly, if you want to wave to us out there. If, we also have a presentation to do to the officer. This is something that the 100 Club does, and on behalf of the President Jim Francisco and the Board of Directors, we're going to present him with the bulletproof vest that the 100 Club goes out on their own and fundraises for, and they give police officers, every police officer in the city of Palm Springs, they fundraise on their own to make sure that they're safe, and they give them a vest. So, we appreciate that. Okay, if you turn towards me and raise your right hand, I, state your name.
Ryan Russo.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And I take this obligation freely
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Which, or which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, you're sworn in as our police officer. As customary, I will be leaving, but I'm going to leave you with Commander McCabe.
Well, we have quite a few presentations this evening, and I am going to ask Janice Lyle if she would please come forward at this time. And this is a proclamation from the city of Palm Springs, California. And it says, "Whereas Janice Lyle is a born-and-bred native Californian, who is a graduate of St. Michael's High School, California State University Dominguez Hills, with a major in art history and 20th century thought and expression, University of California Santa Barbara, where she completed her masters, and continued her education at UCSB as co-chair of the Art History Graduate Students Association, as research assistant, gallery consultant, and guest curator, as well as received a PhD with specialties in 18th and 19th century art, American art, and modern art. And Janice Lyle met Michael Boyer and moved to Palm Springs," where she began her illustrious career at Palm Springs Desert Museum in August of 1984 as assistant curator of art, and has bravely and extremely competently led the museum from 1994 to the present as executive director. And whereas Janice Lyle taught art history classes at the University of Redlands, University of Riverside Extension, Scripps College, and Claremont Graduate School, and was director of education at the museum from 1985 through 1994, responsible for program development, docent's classes, lectures, symposia, outreach programs, et cetera. And from July 1989 to 1990 was the museum's co-director. And whereas Dr. Lyle has been a panel participant speaker, juror at numerous conferences and exhibitions, and has received multiple community commendations, including the Athena Corporate Woman of the Year, Woman of Distinction Award in Education from the Serapemus International of La Quinta, and the Hispanic Award for Cultural Contribution. She has served as a guest lecturer for countless civic and business groups, adult education, and high school courses, and gallery tours. Whereas Janice Lyle has served on many boards, including the California Association of Museums, United Way of the Desert, City of Palm Springs Public Library, and the Auto Club of Southern California. And now therefore I, Ron Oden, Mayor of the city of Palm Springs, California, by the power vested in me due by here proclaim, May 5, Cinco de Mayo Day, 2004, to be Janice Lyle Day.
What I really want to know is, who wrote that? It has been a real joy to be working at the Palm Springs Desert Museum for almost 20 years now, and certainly the last 10 as executive director have been a wonderful and exciting daily challenge, one that has made my life very rich, and I hope has allowed me to offer some of my experiences and contribute to this community. So, I'm very grateful to have been here, and I thank you so much for this recognition. Thanks. Good evening.
Whereas the office of the city clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the city clerk is the oddest among public servants. And whereas the office of the city clerk provides the professional leap between the citizens and the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And the city clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas city clerks serve as the information centers on functions of local government and community. And whereas city clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the city clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of the state, province, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the city clerk. Now therefore I, Ron Oden, Mayor of the city of Palm Springs, do by recognize the week of May 2nd through May 6th as City Clerk's Week, and a special thank you to our city clerk, Trish Sanders.
I really only have probably one thing to say, and it has always been, the times that I've been here at the city of Palm Springs, it's always been an honor to serve as the city clerk, and it has truly been my own pleasure to serve the citizens of this community. Thanks.
Report of the posting of the agenda.
Okay, here we go. This agenda was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday on April the 30th. The council has a lot of additional materials before them tonight. You have additional materials for the Finance Authority, the Community Redevelopment Agency, Items 5, Item 6, Item 7, Item 13, Item 17, Item 18, and the city manager is withdrawing
For clarification, all these materials that are for council tonight have been received previously, have they not?
I have been given the understanding that most of those items have. You do have two pieces in there concerning public hearings that was received in our office today. They're in those folders for you.
Thank you.
And Item Number 10, which is a hearing, that's going to ask to be continued to the next meeting.
Item number?
But the hearing needs to be opened.
But we will open the hearing and continue it.
That is correct.
You have a question?
Ms. Sanders, could you give us the numbers of the, that are, these are marked that you said we have two additional things for tonight that we may not have received?
I believe that would be regarding your public hearing, Item Number 10? I'm sorry, Number 13? And one of those was a letter from Warden and Williams. And the other one that you may have not had faxed, I don't know if the staff faxed it to you or not, but that was a letter from McCormick, Kidman, and Behrens. It's actually CRAA. Should have been the top item in your folder.
Excuse us, we had a legal question. I needed some clarification. And we will move now the next item on our agenda to our closed session report given by our city attorney.
Yes, council and agents met in closed session. On the agency agenda, the real property negotiations, the item with VIP, the item with Gabei, and the Desert Fashion Plaza-Westman Development, we gave status reports on each of those matters. Direction was given for further negotiations. No action was taken. With respect to the city Palm Springs real property negotiations, Desert Water Agency, direction was given for further negotiations. No action was taken. With respect to the item listed concerning Basler, which is an item of existing litigation, the item was not discussed. Concerning the exposure to litigation in two cases, we gave a status report. No action was taken. The initiation of litigation, we gave a status report. No action was taken. The city attorney evaluation was discussed. As far as I know, there wasn't any reportable action. And then on the labor negotiations, we gave a status report on labor negotiations, and the direction was given for further negotiations. No action was taken.
And thank you. The Housing Authority, the Industrial Development Authority have no business this evening. We will convene as the Financing Authority and the City Council. First item is the Convention Center bond issue. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this has to do with the Convention Center expansion regarding the north parking lot, and as that is going to be a part of the bond, in essence, what would be securing the bonds, and I would ask Tom Canar, Finance Director, to give council the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riddy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. The action before you is a joint action of the City Council and the Financing Authority, basically to include the parking lots north of the Convention Center as part of the security for the bond issue. This was something requested by the bond insurer, and we're recommending it by being able to secure bond insurance, and therefore AAA rating will get the lowest possible interest rate. This saves about $75,000 a year compared to a non-insured issue. We could go that way, but my recommendation and the staff's recommendation is to include this little bit of extra security. Doesn't cost the city anything, and it doesn't tie up the land in any other way than it would be otherwise. And there's two resolutions on the, for your approval. Thank you.
Counsel? It's your pleasure.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills?
I move a resolution for the authority and also for the council.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Mills and a second by Councilmember Vogt for both resolutions, Authority and Council. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Hi.
Mr. Mills?
Hi.
Mr. Pugnay?
Hi.
Mr. Mayor?
Hi, and it passes unanimously. And we will adjourn as the Financing Authority and convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency and the City Council. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of March 24th.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Yes. Motion.
And this is second by Councilmember Pugnay. All in favor? Ms. Sanders, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, carries unanimously. And we move to our next item, which is our joint public hearing, merger redevelopment project area number two, planned amendment ordinance introduction. Staff report, please.
Mr. Oden?
Yes.
I own property in project area number two, so I will be abstaining on this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we are going to ask that we actually continue this. The city attorney will give you the details why, but we did receive some written comments. And based upon that, that triggers another process which the city attorney will discuss. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we did receive a communication, as was noted by the city clerk, from the Kidman Law Firm concerning issues that they have raised. It's necessary for a written response to this communication. So we would ask that you open it, but then continue it. JR, do we want to continue it for two weeks or four?
Depends on how long it takes to write the letter. Two weeks.
Two weeks. So if we could go ahead and open it and continue to that date, we will have a written response available for your hearing at that time.
Okay, then we will open the hearing at this time. If there's anyone who would like to speak in public comments, please come forward at this time. If not, you will be able to speak at the next hearing. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Do we need a motion for that continuance?
Well, yeah, you'll continue the -- not close it, you'll continue it to -- what is the date, two weeks?
It'll be May 19.
July 19.
Just a motion would be appropriate.
Motion to continue for two weeks.
We have a motion, there's a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCullough.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, just for my own clarification, I didn't quite hear that. Did you say you're continuing the hearing?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously, and one at 401. We will adjourn as the City Council and continue as the Community Redevelopment Agency. If there's anyone who would like to speak to the Community Redevelopment Agency, please come forward at this time, and you will have three minutes. Seeing no one, we will close public comments, and we will move for our Community Redevelopment Agency, and we'll move to our legislative item. Palm Springs Visitor Center Sewer Line Extension. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a request for an additional approval of $36,400 for engineering of a lift station with regard to the sewer connection at the new visitor center. We've committed to do the sewer hookup. Upon investigation, we find a lift station is required. This would allow us to have the engineering performed. With that, we request your approval. Thank you.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills.
I have a question, probably of Mr. Barackian, I would imagine. On this item, our original approval on this was for 36,400. Is that correct?
No, the original approval was 32,000, 33,000.
Okay. And this is for an additional 36,400, right?
Correct.
So we've more than doubled the initial contract. And my question is, and I understand why, my question is, why are we doing it this way in a modification of an existing contract versus a change order? Is that a requirement because of the amount?
Well, there's a -- that's essentially what it is, but it's not a construction contract, it's a design contract.
Right.
So we have to do basically an amendment to the contract, and that's what this is.
You're going back in your -- you're taking the original contract, and you're amending it?
Correct.
Not attaching an amendment to it, you're going back and actually amending it.
Right, which is typically how the professional services contracts are.
And this has nothing to do with landscape architectural services, correct?
Correct.
Then we probably need to take it off the cover sheet on CRAB3.
And that's true.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills.
I'll move the resolution.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Vogt. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Hi.
Mr. Mills?
Hi.
Mr. Pugnay?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman?
Hi, and it passes unanimously. We will adjourn as Community Redevelopment Agency and reconvene as City Council. I have a number of cards here, but I would like to say before I call on these persons, on Item Number 13, which was a public hearing, which is the general planned amendment for CATHON Holdings, the Trenwest Housing Program, if you want to make comments on that item when it comes up, we will open testimony only for the Casey's June Beetle. So if you want to make public comments regarding that item, please come now in public comments. The cards that I have, the first one is Sandra K. Barney. If you please come forward at this time, you'll have three minutes. Followed by Charlie Robles. Followed by Dr. Wayne McKinney. Good evening, welcome, you'll have three minutes.
I just want to support the Palm Springs International Film Festival. I'm a volunteer for the film festival, and I've seen it really progress in the 20 years that I've lived in the community, and especially the last couple of years. I'd like to see it get in the budget, and it should bring in 100,000 people, I think, this year.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Robles, good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Whereas -- no, sorry, wrong thing. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Charlie Robles, I'm the General Manager of the Parker Meridian Palm Springs. I am also a business owner, a homeowner here in Palm Springs. I've come here tonight to speak about something very near and dear to my heart, money. I do not envy you the daunting task of having to balance a budget in such a difficult fiscal time. I would however be remiss not to come to you tonight to plead for the case of tourism. As we all know, tourism is our number one industry, and let's be honest, pretty much it's the only industry in Palm Springs. Basically, what tourism does is sell Palm Springs to the world, and by doing so, bring in tourists who pay not only TOT, but also spend money in our restaurants, retail establishments, and attractions. It takes money to make money. The money we spend now on advertising, fam trips, and trade shows may show a profit, may not show a profit for months, or maybe even years. Without even making any cuts in the tourism budget, we are already far behind the competition in spending dollars. No one wants to see city services cut, but without tourism, there will be less visitors paying the TOT and spending their dollars in our city. Can the hotels, restaurants, shops, and attractions afford to keep your constituents employed if the business is not there? I don't think so. We have just gone through a very difficult time in tourism. We decided that tourism should not be in the business of promoting certain events. Many of us have even criticized those events of not being the caliber that Palm Springs deserves here in the city. There is one event, however, that should be the benchmark for all events in Palm Springs. That is the Palm Springs International Film Festival. This event is seen all over the world and talked about year-round, not just during the festival. The publicity that my hotel alone received was enough for me to donate $35,000 worth of rooms for the festival for attending celebrities. Earl Greenberg, along with Harold Maxner, and the entire board have worked very hard to make sure that we keep these hotel rooms here in Palm Springs. Please don't allow this festival to leave our city. Thank you and good evening.
And thank you. Dr. Wayne McKinney, followed by Sergio Santo and Aftab Dada. Good evening and welcome.
I'm here to say thank you, and that's a much more joyful and a lot easier to do than my usual, which is throw down my wooden staff and turn it into a serpent. I wanted to say thank you to the council for allowing the Episcopal Community Services to join us at the Frey Building. And I want to give you just very briefly here what has happened since that started eight weeks ago. We have served 3,781 meals. We have had 108 new case management clients. We have had six clients become employed. We have placed 12 families in long-term housing. And 13 households were placed in emergency shelter. Six applicants were helped to file for their disability. 528 client contacts and services were provided. And we had 1,488 client referrals given. And so I want to thank all of you for giving us this opportunity. And I want to acknowledge that it shows your concern for the poor and for the homeless, and I commend you for that. And if you read Psalm 41, you'll find out God gives you brownie points for it. I thank you all.
And thank you, Wayne.
Each and every one of you.
Sergio? I think he may have left. Aftab, if you please come forward. Good evening, welcome, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. My name is Aftab Dada, I'm the General Manager at the Hilton Palm Springs Resort. I've been the manager at the Hilton since 1990 at the infancy of the film festival. During the last 14 years, the hospitality community, including the Hilton, has contributed hundreds and thousands of complimentary room nights to support as an investment for our future. The early 90s and the mid 90s and even the late 90s, this has been a great publicity and marketing event for our city. Under the leadership of Earl Greenberg, Harold Maxner, and Darrell McDonald, and the remainder of the board, the hospitality community has seen a true impact of the room nights that festival has started to generate for our hospitality community. And as you know it, once you have a lot of heads in beds, it generates a lot of revenue for the entire city. This is a premier branding event for our city. It's recognized not only domestically, but also internationally. Year-round publicity and the publicity it generates for the amount of investment our city makes, 350,000, we cannot buy this kind of publicity promotion in all the advertisement we get. So I'm here tonight, hope that the council will approve this premier event for a long period of time. This is not an expense. This is an investment for our entire city. Thank you.
And thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak in public comments, please come forward at this time. I do not have any more cards. You'll have three minutes. Please come forward at this time. Good evening. Please give your name to the clerk.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Marvin Roos with MSA Consulting. We're here on the CATHON item, you've received some information on that. We'll talk about the lack of Casey's June Beetle at the public hearing. Greg Endo, our traffic consultant, is also here. If you have any questions, I believe you have some information on that, although you may have received his letter today. Here to, again, answer any questions. I think we've answered all the issues that were raised by the Sierra Club. We've made changes to the plan to reduce the single-family lot count, to open up the golf window to Indian Avenue in particular. We only have about 15 lots backing on the Indian out of the whole 1,200-unit project. I think we've done a lot of work, added another access point, right-in, right-out on Indian, so that divert some of the traffic that would have to wind through the project otherwise. So again, we're here at that point. If you have any questions to ask, we'd be here to answer them. Thank you.
And thank you. Good evening, please give your name to the clerk, you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Frank Borgers, 1492 Camino Real, Palm Springs. I want to address Item 13, although not on the June Beetle, on the issue of water. I'm speaking on behalf of a number of residents in the area that are deeply concerned about the impact of large-scale commercial residential developments that are coming before the City Council, have come before the City Council recently, and their impact on natural resources, and specifically on the water supply of the valley. The transmissed housing development at over 1,200 units, over 300 acres, is an unprecedented scale for Palm Springs, and clearly will have very significant impacts on the water supply, both for Palm Springs and throughout the valley. And we've consulted with a number of water law experts and attorneys who've raised a number of concerns regarding the Desert Water Agency's report. Principally, they've pointed out that the agency's report, at under four pages, woefully inadequate to address the potential impacts of this project on the water supply. And they've advised us that pursuant to Senate Bill 901, Water Code 10910, that the city should commission a far more in-depth analysis of the impact on the water supply that's more in-depth and also independent. And they've also alerted us to a number of more specific concerns. Firstly, the acknowledgement in the report that the developer proposes an unspecified number of domestic water wells in the project. Secondly, that recycled water is unavailable for irrigation in this project, and therefore domestic water will use for irrigation for landscaping and on the 98-acre golf course. And thirdly, that the proposed development site is in a Site 1 evaporation area, which is the highest level of evaporation. And so we'll have obviously high levels of evaporation on the landscaping of the golf course. And so based on these concerns, we're asking that the City Council hold off on any decision on the project until a full, in-depth, and independent report on the impact on the water is conducted by the city. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, I'm Greg Day, and I'm a homeowner on Cardio Avenue in Little Tuscany, and I'm a co-chair of the Chino Canyon Neighborhoods Organization. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of that organization about the Palm Springs Village, the Palm Springs Village Project that's before you tonight for a vote. We are concerned about its impact in many ways on the city, and there are a lot of questions to be answered here, and we feel that we need more information. The city needs to have more information before it proceeds in approving this project. As you know, thanks to your new leadership, we now have a City Master Plan Revision Committee, and we are participating in the master plan. And also, I am a representative on the Neighborhood Oversight Committee for Inclusion of Neighborhoods and City Participation. And we don't have the master plan in place, we're working on it, you know, the future of Palm Springs weighs in the balance here. We have these large-scale projects coming before you rapidly, and we really don't have the information that we need to make a really, I think, educated or well-informed decision. For example, what impact will this project have on the need for more police resources in Palm Springs? I know that your budget currently has been cut back, you're going to have to cut back police personnel, fire department the same way. What about health services? When you add this large number of residents to the city, what do the taxes on this new property that come back to the city actually pay for the services that these people will need? And then the larger picture, what impact will it have? I think it's ironic that this is called Palm Springs Village, because its density and scale is really quite large. And the question remains, will Palm Springs preserve its village character and its open space and beauty that attracts tourism here and is our primary source of income in the future? And that's a decision we all have to make together. We're very happy to be a part of this process, but you know, the process hasn't been completed yet. And we- And we hope that you will obtain more information about this project before you move forward in approving it. Thank you.
And thank you. If there's no one else who would like to speak in public comments. Good evening. Welcome, you'll have three minutes, please give your name to the seat clerk.
Okay, Frank Tyson. Last Friday afternoon, there was a meeting at the Mesquite Country Club regarding, regarding the development of the Tommy Jacobs Bel Air Greens. And the good news was that it was at a very early stage, like at the conceptual stage, which is wonderful. And I congratulate Doug Evans for putting it on and the Office of Neighborhood Involvement that soon. The bad news is that here we're about possibly to lose another landmark in town, a wonderful piece of open space. And I'm very concerned, being in the tourist industry, of losing all our attractions. We lost the Biltmore, which could have been a great Rat Pack venue. We lost Palapas. And ironically, we're spending 40 or 50 million dollars on a new convention center and one of the, one of the favorite places of the convention is, is to go to Las Palapas. And now they're moving out of town. And I think one of the reasons is that we're not on the ball fast enough about these issues. If we don't watch it, everything that has open space is going to be condos and townhouses, including a lot of the inns that have a lot of open space. I think it's very scary and I think we need to start being proactive. So the suggestion I'd like to make to the council that in addition to now notifying, which I think is a wonderful development, the neighborhoods very far in advance at the conceptual stage, I think we also should notify the City Council far in advance. Because most of the time, we've had some horrendous projects come before you and you got a few days to digest it and by that time it's too late. The, the thing is a done deal. But I think maybe, I would like to suggest that we change our ways of doing things. Anything that comes to this town goes to the council and the neighborhood right away. Let's have a public discussion on it and let's talk about whether something is good for the community or not good for the community. I think in the long run, it's, it's a better thing for the community, it's fairer to the neighborhoods, it's fairer to you and it's fairer to the developers because it's not fair for a developer to spend all his money penciling out a project, hiring all the people and then to be told, no, we don't want it. Or it's not good or it should be changed. So I, I would like to see that happen. Meanwhile, I like to plead for some real attention to Tommy Jacobs Bel Air Greens. If nothing else, that restaurant, which is one of the most romantic places, Mr. Fairchild ran it and I, we used to send guests there all the time, including conventioneers, with the ducks and the pond and everything, and maybe at least we can preserve there, but hopefully like to preserve a lot more because we cannot just go on losing all our wonderful attractions that make Palm Springs. Thank you.
And thank you. I'm going to ask if there's, if there are any others who wish to speak in public comments, please line up because if not, this will be our last speaker. If you wish to speak in public comments.
I feel so important.
You are.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Jim Dunn, General Manager of the Convention Center, and I'm here for two reasons tonight. First of all, to thank you for getting us underway on our expansion. If you've driven by the building, it's already changed dramatically since we began. The project team has worked very well to get us started and also remain open with clients coming in. We've had clients every week since we started and we anticipate having clients throughout the construction. So signs are good that this is working. Secondly, I'm donning another hat tonight on behalf of tourism in regards to the film festival on your agenda for the night. And I know you have a lot of budget concerns to balance and we're one of those concerns. But with the film festival, I also, I just wanted to make a very brief comment that in terms of advertising dollars, that's something that tourism is very involved in because that's something that's very important to what we do. The investment in the film festival is something that pays back or is a bargain in the sense of buying advertising time. The coverage we get on internet, entertainment tonight in People Magazine and countless other magazines, including Variety and Worldwide Magazine coverage and newspaper coverage is something we simply couldn't buy. And if we could buy it, we couldn't afford it. So this is just one more investment in terms of getting our city out there and in a very positive light. And it's something that I urge you to continue if there's a way to do it. So thank you for your time.
And thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Dwayne Rohrbach, the General Manager of the Wyndham Hotel, 888 Takwitz Canyon Way. I'm here to show my support for the full funding of the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism Budget, full funding for the Mistene USA and full funding, obviously, for the Palm Springs International Film Festival. These, these events are something that, that brings people to Palm Springs year round. It brings people to Palm Springs in the future as well. The, the media exposure is just absolutely amazing. It shows Palm Springs in a positive light. It allows people to see why Palm Springs is such a wonderful place to visit and why it's a great place to live. Thank you.
And thank you. This time we'll close public comments. And we will move to...